Good morning all and welcome to this workshop session of the St. Lucie County School Board. If you would stand with me please for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the kids at Hope pledge.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Mr. Superintendent, before we move into the items for board discussion, I would like to request a moment of silence. For those of you that may remember, it was 12 years ago today that the horrific bus accident happened, claiming the life and impacting a lot of our FK suite students as well as our entire district. So if you would, just take a few moments in silent thought to remember the impact that that had on our district and the families that were involved. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for that allowance, and we can now move into your workshop agenda.
All right. Good morning. It's good to see everybody back after spring break. I hope I know some of you got away. I saw a number of pictures. Dr. Mills in Los Angeles to see her son, so wonderful, and I know Mr. Ingersoll, you were up in New York. I did a staycation, so I went absolutely nowhere and enjoyed myself. So we have a couple of items, a few presentations this morning, but first, I just very briefly wanted to revisit, and you do have it in front of you, which is the public participation at board meetings policy 0169.1. So I think Dr. Mills said this the most succinctly at the board meeting that we had on the 12th: If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I think sometimes, as superintendent, this is only my second year on the job, and sometimes when you try to make everybody happy, you don't make anybody happy. So I think I heard the board loud and clear. We reverted back to our original policy at that meeting. However, we had to reformat that existing policy into the Neola template, and that's still the template with the existing policy. The old policy has to go before the board on April 9th. I plan to recommend no changes to this policy. I recommend no changes unless directed by the board to do so. So if we're good with that, we can move on to our presentations. Chairperson Holly?
Any comment? As superintendent said, this will come before us for vote at our April 9th meeting. Okay, seeing none, Mr. Superintendent?
Okay, so we have three presentations today, and I'm really excited about a few of them. One is we're really trying to market our brand. We're in a very competitive market. Parents have options of where they send their children to school, and I'd like to thank the St. Lucie County Public Schools is the best option. I firmly believe that. Actually, the most recognizable brand in our county is the Mets. We have a very strong partnership with the Mets, and that partnership I really wanted to revisit, and we have partnered with the Education Foundation. I want to thank Tom Jones and also our members of our foundation. I know many of some folks here in the meeting today are part of the board, but they've made an investment in advertisement at the stadium, which we rolled out for spring training, and I managed to catch quite a few of the games. Lydia Martin is going to be our first presenter today, and she's going to kind of outline what that marketing looks like. And it's not necessarily marketing, you know, where the best place to send your kids is. I mean, because we're marketing that as well, but it's also marketing the fact that it's a great place to work. St. Lucie County Public Schools continues to be one of the greatest places to work, and also folks that watch those games, that goes out nationwide as part of Major League Baseball, and we are afforded a number of commercials that get streamed out that make this place such an attractive place to live, work, and raise your children. The second presentation, and I think you'll really like this one, is Mr. O'Leary providing some construction updates on the new Legacy High School. I want to once again congratulate the principal, Mr. Smith, and also an update on the Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, where we are with that. We also are going to be moving forward with the bid for the new K-8 that is going to be west on Tradition, off of Tradition Parkway in the Western Corridor there. And we also have a number of jobs, you know, we're getting into the, I want to thank also Mrs. Holly, you were at the county commission meeting on Friday where they approved our half penny renewal, which will go on the ballot in November. A number of jobs that we're talking about that are running concurrently. If you note on Terrence's presentation, we have a number of our contractors here today, and we use local contractors on our jobs, and you'll see basically who is working on what across our district, because we've got a number of jobs, be it HVAC, we're building a new cafeteria at CAST, we have upcoming, if you ever go and visit St. Lucie West Centennial, we're doing a number of things to the exterior of that school, and you're going to see some of the things, those things in this presentation. But we're also converting CA Moore into a K-8 with a gym, and also at Palm Point, that school will also be getting a gym as part of our plan. Lastly, Ms. Albritton, this is not a new presentation. We've condensed it to about five slides. It's just a revisitation. We're about to put out a very large bid to build another new school. Just to remind you, we took the board members' input after we went through this process the last time. I want to make sure the board members understood what that process was, because we're about to get into that, and as you know, once we push that out, we can't be talking to our contractors about those bids and about those jobs, so Kim's going to revisit that with us. So with that being said, I'd ask Ms. Martin, our Chief Communications Officer, to come up, and she's going to start us off. Lydia?
Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince. As you know, Clover Park Stadium in Port St. Lucie is the home for the New York Mets' spring training, as well as the Single A affiliate, St. Lucie Mets. It also serves as a rehab location during regular season for the big leaguers if they get injured. Since 1988, people from all over the country descend on Port St. Lucie during spring training to get their first look at their beloved New York Mets. The Mets are one of the most recognized brands on the Treasure Coast, so it makes sense from a marketing perspective to partner with them to boost our brand recognition. This partnership benefits schools, students, and gives our district national exposure. These are some of the partnership activities that we've had and continue to enjoy with the Mets. All of our schools have school fundraising opportunities throughout the St. Lucie Mets' season, where they can have a school spirit night, sell tickets, profit off of those tickets. During those nights, they have the opportunity to have a student or a band perform the National Anthem, have their JROTC present colors, as well as have somebody of note to throw out the first pitch. The Mets also has an annual education day where schools are invited to enjoy the Mets. They get lunch provided for them, and it's just an opportunity for them to enjoy the Mets game. Lots of schools use those as PBIS end-of-the-year celebrations. So these are things that we've had ongoing with the Mets, and we continue to have more and more schools participate. This year, something new that we got to participate with, that Dr. Prince mentioned, are these paid advertisements that were sponsored by the St. Lucie County Education Foundation. So they were a number of collateral opportunities. One was PA announcements. These are announcements that were made and will be continued to be made during the St. Lucie Mets' season, and these are three 30-second reads by the PA announcer in the stadium. And this is where we have the opportunity to share our message about being a Destination District, best places to work, and providing high-quality career and technical education programs. We also have an eight-foot banner out in left field, and I'll show you a picture of that in just a moment. And then we have a couple of digital ads. We have three 30-second commercials that are being played on the Jumbotron in rotation, as well as there's a new digital ad opportunity behind home plate. So people in the stadium can't necessarily see that, but the viewing audience can see that every time they focus on the batter. So we do have both our logo, the Education Foundation logo, and our Destination District slogan. So this is what the banner looks like. I am St. Lucie Public Schools. This is one of our current campaigns. Hopefully, you've seen some of our videos that we have out there, and this is what it actually looks like in the outfield. So we're really excited to be able to have that opportunity. And then I'm going to share a couple of the videos that we have playing at the Mets stadium as well.
I want to be a Major League Baseball player.
I want to be a scientist.
That's.
A race car driver.
I want to be a YouTuber.
A teacher.
And with these ads, our goal is really to be very high-energy, show people a lot of really good visual images along with our branded messaging. And this is another one of the commercials that we have.
I want to be a scientist.
I'm working on my nursing assistance certification, and I already have my EKG certification.
I'd like to run multiple companies, not only successful companies, but companies that you could see 50 years from now.
So there's just a couple of the examples. In addition to the partnerships that schools have, the district also partners with them. They allow us to use their facility on occasion for meetings, celebrations, so we're really appreciative of the partnership that we have with the Mets. Are there any questions?
Lydia, thank you. I, you know, after going to a few games, I was watching, I think one would play in the fourth inning and one would play in the eighth inning, and I really wasn't watching the ads. I was watching people watching the ads, and it was really interesting whenever you've got, people respond to children. You know, whenever they see a child or they hear a child, they watch. I think that Lydia, your team did a great job on the ads. I think it encapsulated what we're about. You know, we're about making sure that St. Lucie Public Schools is the best part of every child's day and fulfilling those dreams, because every child goes to school dreaming about something, and that's what we want to make sure that we're accomplishing, is they have opportunity to chase those dreams, and they have caring adults that are going to support them. So, great job. I hope you sometimes get out to a game, one of our spring training games. I'll give a shout-out because one of the future employees of the Mets just happens to be my son, who will be coming back April 21st to get started out there. So if you go out, you'll see my son, Maverick Prince. He's going to be so embarrassed when I say this, but he's out there at spring training, but I'll be out there as well. So I'm going to pivot now to what I'm really excited about. We've got some drone footage to share with you on the construction updates, and Terrence O'Leary, our Chief Operating Officer, is going to come and present. Mr. O'Leary, I am going to say politely, take it slow, because we want to make sure, because this is an image-heavy presentation, and there is a lot of detail that I want the board to see, and I know you'll point some of those things out.
Yes.
With regards to some of the time-lapse stuff, just the work that's gone on over the last three or four months, like some before-and-after pictures, and also pointing out which vendors and which construction folks are working on what projects. So, Mr. O'Leary?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. That was my presentation. Good morning, Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Prince. I'd be remiss to not start this presentation without recognizing all the team that it takes to put all of these constructions. So when I call their name, if they just stand up so they can be recognized. And that's Director of Facilities, Derek McSween. I also have Senior Project Manager, Matt Weber, and Anthony Rake. They're not here because they are at construction meetings at this time. In addition to that, Nicole Fogarty, part of the team, as well as Kim Albritton and Michelle Thomas, who don't miss meetings as well. Jim Babington, who you'll see doing a tremendous amount of work on our HVAC. He's over our HVAC team. And not last but least, but the most, one of the most important, is our Building Code Administrator, Bob Massa, who has to go and inspect every single job. And they're individuals that don't work an eight-to-four-hour job. When some of these pours are happening, they're happening at 2:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the morning, and I'm remiss. Also, our Superintendent of Construction now, Todd Smith, who's on the site just as much as we are. Principal Smith, sorry, I just saw him over there. But those individuals are coming out at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning to watch as pours are happening, inspecting it. Bob and his team, Dante, go out and have to inspect all these jobs. It is a great advantage just for us to have some of our own Building Code Administrators, because it keeps the process going and allows us to get a lot of this work you're going to see today completed. With that said, it's our promise to provide world-class educational facilities. It is your support that allows us to provide for our students' success, and that's the model that we're really focused on, on all of these projects as we go through today. Here are all the projects that are going on, and these aren't all of them. We have our daily work. We have bathrooms being completely redone at Port St. Lucie High, every single bathroom. There's doors going in place. We're just highlighting a lot of them that are our most impactful for the district from a time, money, those types of sense. Right now, we're going to talk about Legacy High School, Fort Pierce Westwood, where they're at today, the Western Grove site. We have some drone footage for you and where we're at on that, the CAST, the new cafitorium that's being in place, and you'll see where that is in its construction process, all the HVAC projects and updates that are going on at Mariposa, Forest Grove, Manatee, and Dale Castance. And that is with several different construction companies, but what's different, because we are pushing so quickly, is that we're doing that with occupied sites. So part of that team is collaborating with the local administrators, principals, to make sure we're not interfering at all in their construction, making sure the sites are clean every day before our teams leave, and making sure they're in the safe environment. In addition, we'll talk to you about the St. Lucie West School outdoor environmental revitalization, and then CA Moore and Palm Point. So I broke this down to stages where we're at and tried to use it just in terms we can understand. So mass grading, we went in, graded the facility, you'll be able to see that, the foundations being poured, the structure as it's being laid out and built horizontally, and now we're at the point where we are moving tilt walls, as you have seen in the past. But all that due diligence on a daily basis leads to the progress we're at today.
Well, first and foremost, the most important thing right now is we are on Tuesday evening. The School Board officially named our high school.
Board members, we will move on to a moment that I know a lot of people have been waiting for the announcement, the naming process and the results for the new Tradition Triple D High School. Your new high school, Mr. Smith, will be called Legacy High School. Congratulations. Now you have something to build upon and make a legacy.
Legacy High School. We asked for participation from the community. We had an open meeting, and people just presented names for the school. We opened up with 38 names. We had a second teams meeting, and we cut the 38 names down to 20 names. The third meeting was held actually through a team survey. The community members identified school names that they liked, were able to submit three names to the School Board for final approval. The School Board met on Tuesday evening, and they select Legacy High School.
Well, we've got a lot of underground utilities that have been installed. We've done the parking lots. First lift of asphalt is going in. We've poured the concrete foundations and footers, and now we've done the tilt walls.
So once the walls are stood welded in place, we start dropping in the columns, and we start dropping in the joists to actually tie the structure together. And then from that point on is when we really start to move inside. We can dry in the building, put the roof on, and start all the interiors to make sure the school is ready and open for the children. They start closing in the building with windows, doors, the roofing. They pretty much close in the building envelope, and then all the other subcontractors come in to start doing the interior build-out, interior partitions, framing, drywall, flooring, indoor mechanical systems, indoor electrical systems, and indoor plumbing systems. We really want to make sure that these capital projects help the community, not just the kids, but everybody at large. So for instance, our structural contractor is doing all the tilt wall right now. He's local, based out of Fort Pierce. We're also using local electrician as well, so we're going to hope to keep maybe 50% of the subcontractors onsite as local subcontractors, keep as much money as we can in the community. So where we're at now, we're actually on schedule. We're, you know, we should be able to turn this thing over in May of 2025, which will allow the district to begin to move in all their equipment, furniture, and get ready for kids to come back in August. So right now, we see no issues why we can't do that, and we're looking forward to turning it over.
What building is this that is currently being put up?
Right now, that's Building 1. Building 1 is being built in three phases. We have 1A, 1B, and 1C. You're looking at the construction of 1B right now, and right now, they're working on a stairwell. Building 1, 1A will be classrooms. Building 1B will be administrative offices, and Building C will be classrooms again. First floor and second floor. On the second floor, we'll also have the media center. In May and June, we'll start looking at, start the hiring process, hire personnel for administrative staff, and start moving towards hiring instructional, non-instruction staff. We're really excited to bring one of the first programs to our areas, Exercise Science. And the purpose of Exercise Science is to capture all the students that have an interest in that, individuals that may want to be a PT, physical therapist, occupational therapist, or even a sports trainer. It's a field that's grown in nature and has a distinctive need in our area. Additionally, we have Health Science, so in our Health Science Department, we have the traditional plan of LPNs, looking for, you know, establishing LPN, Certified Nurse and Assistance, and also we're going to look at Dental Aid. So I did a first program in our area. We're actually going to have six dental chairs in our school, and then individuals will be working through the process to establish skills that they can be gainfully employed when they leave. Couple of that, we'll have Global Logistics. If you look at the corridor in Tradition, Costco, Amazon, Walmart, those are kids can go out there and work in that field.
Well, I feel it's great. I got three school-aged children, and so it feels good knowing that I'm able to provide some support to the service that we give to the community. I think it's amazing. It's incredible. I've actually, you know, been, I went through St. Lucie County Schools, started in kindergarten, graduated from Centennial High School, went to Indian River State College. To be able to come back here to a community, start a business, and build the next generation of the schools for the kids is incredible. And I think it's a huge asset to the community that the district is, you know, forward-thinking to the new areas to get schools in places where we need them.
Go Legacy, and we're going to let the Legacy begin.
So I would like to thank Lydia Martin and her team for putting that piece together. We are using that on social media and pushing that out to the community so they're aware of our progress on the schools, Legacy High School. So I just wanted to recap in summary of some of the things you were seeing and pointed out to you. Obviously, you can see Building 1. 2 is right behind it. Building 1 had about 152 tilt walls already put up on Building 1, which you heard Mr. Smith talk about. Classrooms, two-floor classrooms in 1A. 1B is the administration floors with the media center, and then 1C is classrooms on the two floors. So that's already in place. Starting this week, we're working on Building 2, raising the walls on Building 2. That will be 82 tilt walls being raised, and then we'll move on to Building 3. In addition to that, talking about scheduling and how do we move forward and keep on schedule, you saw the parking lots in place already. You also saw here where it says Legacy Entrance. We're already working on those types of things, which puts us forward in the schedule. In the back right, right about here, back left, sorry, those are the actual steel. They're putting that steel together off-site, doing the welding already, and those are called kites. And what they'll do is fly those kites in so that they can put them into the system a lot quicker, and then just finish up the welding. It's less welding on the structure itself. They're already building it off, so all of these are ways that we can keep up with our schedule and make sure we're ahead of schedule, on time. As you heard Brandon say, delivering that in May, which gives the school time to get organized to their building, have their professional development, and be ready to go to accept children in our August timeframe. So if you look here visually, and this is what I believe Dr. Prince was alluding to, back on June 23, you had a blank canvas. March of '24, just last week, you can see the difference and the growth and the progress within the construction site. I'm very, I'm a visual learner, so when I look at things, I can look at it. I look at the reports every day, look at the photos in the morning every day, and then I ride out, and then I can physically see it. So I take that visual snapshot in my head, then I go onsite, make sure, I'm working with our team. Yep, we see it here, we see it here, and it's being documented as we're going along. In addition to that, you see all the mass grading work that started in July with all the storm drainage and utilities being inputted, all the way to the foundations. And I'm just going to leave that up there so you can see the progress of everything going on that site. And they're doing a phenomenal job getting that site remaining on schedule, communicating to our teams, our teams communicating to them, and all of this has to be inspected as it goes in the ground. So Bob and his team are out early mornings, making sure that everything's done right and signing off on it. And again, that is a monumental task when you see us go further, not just at Legacy High School, but at Westwood, at CAST. So they're constantly out there, all of our team, making things happen, and again, not between 8 and 4, but making it all during the evening into early mornings when they're doing the concrete. Again, you can see when we started putting up the first tilt wall, it was the end of February, and you can see that we had 152 panels that are secure in place at this point. And then you heard Matthew, who is our Senior Project Manager, and Brandon, who's the CEO of Remnant, will start drying in the buildings, getting roofs on, and then start moving to the interior of the building. And that's what this is talking about here. This week, we'll be start raising the walls on Building 2. There's 82 of them already in the cast beds, and then moving on to Building 3, foundations moving that forward. Then we'll do the rough-in, which is the dry-in, which you heard them talking about, putting on the roof, getting everything built inside, interior finishes, athletic fields, and then the landscape and hardscape, so benches, those types of things. And then I just wanted to give an easier view, you know? Sometimes we throw up the big Gantt charts, and they're massive. You know, when we're looking at this in our weekly meetings, they're massive Gantt charts. Really, this is where we're at. So the purpose of this slide is basically, we're on time, we're on budget, and we're looking to turn this school over to proud Principal Todd Smith, Legacy High School, in May of 2025. Now we're going to move on to our next project, which is Fort Pierce Westwood West Prep Academy. And you're going to see how much work has been done on their site as well, and I'm going to show a short video. There's Angle Road, as you can see it, and then also Panther Lane. And as you're going through, I'm going to show you some different things. You can see the retention ponds are in, the grading has already been done. You can see where the building layouts are, the bus loop, those types of things going in. Athletic fields are being put in place and graded, as you can see. That's a 62-acre site. It is a massive site. You can see additional retention ponds for the fields in the back. Obviously, those will be fenced in. I know that was a question we had prior, but those will definitely be fenced in. But it is much different than it was when we were there January 19th for our groundbreaking ceremony. As we finish up all the utilities, underground, storm drains, and those types of things, then we move to the process. We start the rough-in, and we start the foundations, and then there too, we start the tilt walls, and we have a schedule for all of those at this time. So currently, mass grading and foundation, roughing in, that's where we are at this point. And I just wanted to give you the visual again. That's where we were, and you'll notice the time date stamp, November 27th. And I just wanted to give you the visual again. That's where we were, and you'll notice the time date stamp, November twenty-seventh. And that's where we are on three eighteen. So, all the grading done, putting in all the drainage and everything else. Lots of work going on there for the project. The one thing there in the back is the athletic fields. We are working with the school to make sure we're not interrupting any of the work we're doing with Mr. Alfonso. So, we plan to have the practice football field and the soccer field, which starts a little later, be turned over to them in July of 2024. So, those two fields will be ready so that they can continue on with their athletic events. Again, this is an occupied campus, so very unique, making sure we're staying out of the way. Our construction is clean, making sure we have safety so it's not to interfere at all with the school and the school activities that are going on their site. Again, here are some of the mass grading, the sanitary storm structures, piping is all ongoing. Just giving you the mass work that's being put on and getting in place. But again, we're making progress. We're on time. We have less float in this schedule, but we will be on time with that process to make sure that we're delivering that for the January 2026 date. Again, same concept. Here's our schedule, just from a high, high level, where, and I just wanted to make sure everybody saw, on July twenty-four for the athletic fields, that is only for the practice football field because they do play their games at Lone Wood Stadium, but they do need their practice football field. We've committed to making sure that happens for them, and then again, for soccer. So, our next is our Cast New Cafeteria, right? The current cafeteria is about five thousand square feet. The new cafeteria will be over eleven thousand square feet, which will also have a receiving area for maintenance and custodial, storage area, and will have a stage, all of the things that our other K eights have. That is the work we've been doing. That's a little bit different. We want to make sure that we keep the integrity of Fort Pierce, I mean, Cast in place. So, you can see the design rendering that we have from our architects to blend in with the other current buildings. We took a lot of time making sure that that met all of the historical code that was being asked us to do. So, there, we've already completed the mass grading, right? Flattening the dirt out, making sure we had all our stormwater, drainage, utilities, and everything else, foundation poured. And there, we're using concrete block, so masonry block, and we're building that up as well. Again, where that is located is, if you're familiar with the site, it will be to the left of the site if we're facing the site, to the Preston Court side, and Boston Avenue behind us, and Delaware Avenue in front. So, just to the left, if you're looking at the site. You can see, not kidding about the early morning pores of that concrete, but that's the foundation going in. And then again, all of the work around making sure utilities are roughed in, and then starting the masonry work, that's where we are today at Point, is they're building up the walls for that cafeteria program. This is being completed by Procter, so you'll notice in our slide deck, I will show you in the bottom left what construction company we're working with, and we have a diverse amount of our contractors in doing a lot of our projects because this is all over the county. It's in the north and in the south, so we want to make sure that we're distributing that work to all of our different construction management companies. So, remaining on that schedule, we still have the structure. We still have to do the interior rough-in, you know, all the interior finishes, all the furniture, landscape, and hardscape for that one as well. Our goal and expected is to be finished with that around October thirty-first of 2024, and then that will, they will turn it over to us. We have some work, cameras and all the safety work that we'll need to be on there, but we expect them to be in on January as well. Construction be completed in October gives us time to do all the ancillary type of work. And then again, just trying to stay theme, here is our construction work, and you see the October finish, construction of that building, and then allowing us to, the owner, to come in and start putting up cameras and other things that we wanted to make sure we were ready to do. The next, I'm going to talk about Western Grove. We took a drone out. It was a very sunny day when we went out there. So, it's not the greatest video, but we like to think we can shoot video. So, we went out and took some videos. So, I wanted just to show you some aerial shots of that. You can see right here in the front, we have over twenty acres. It is to on North-South One A, and I'll be able to show you that, and Tradition Parkway. So, as you drive all the way out, past the VA, past the charter schools, going out towards the Cadence, Seville, and Emery, the large housing development going out there, it's right to the left, right there. There's a dirt road that you're able to take and brings you to this area here.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yes, sir.
Actually, one of the easiest markers out there, if you're going, because I live out there. If you're going west on Tradition Parkway, you'll see all the land cleared for the park. Yeah, the park that's going out there. They've cleared all of that property, and our, this property is literally adjacent to that.
Yes. So, that is one hundred and ten acres. You really can't make it of park that they've already cleared. And I have a little screenshot for you to see that, and we are right behind that park. No problems?
Like I said, what could possibly go wrong?
Okay, it's coming down. Thank you, Lydia. Mr. Gent taught me well. So, you can just see some of the area. Some of this area to the right is not ours. Actually, they're taking the water out of the Cadence project. That's the water you see along that side. They're running that to dry out their project on the north side of our campus, and they're running water out. That's what you see on the front side of it. But we have already been speaking with the developer about saving up some of that dirt that they have over at their Tradition Park, see if we can move some of that dirt onto our areas for the fill, just like we did when we were at Legacy High School, when they were digging out the golf courses. So, we're not trucking in a lot of the dirt. We're just reusing some of that dirt. So, we are trying those innovative things, working with our developers and our community, move some of that bank dirt over to our areas as well. Here's a better, a little better shot from the front side. You see that's right here. This is the North-South A road that will be put in. Here is Tradition Parkway, like Dr. Prince had said. Moving out west, you would just make a left into our property here. These are the new Cadence and, and, I'm sorry, Seville here, Cadence over here, Emery's in the back over on the other side, where they're building in. Our new high school would be right about, so if you go up North-South A, right about over here. And you actually, if you go out on the site, you actually see the crane and everything else. It's really close to it. Here was an image that Dr. Prince was talking about there. That's the one hundred and ten-acre park that they are putting in right onsite there. It is massive. You cannot miss it when you're going down Tradition Parkway. That's already been cleared, and they're moving on that as we speak. Our work around that is we've already hired Binkley, our architects, that are preparing the design criteria package for the typical K that we use. The design criteria package will be based off of similar campuses such as Palm Point, Westgate, Okamic, Sam Gaines, as well as portions of LPA and Manatee. The consultant will update the prototype for site conditions, current technologies, building codes, and educational requirements. The design criteria package will include conceptual site plans, floor plans, construction schedule, construction budget. So, once we have that, we'll take those design packages, and that's what Kim will be talking about in the next session. We will then put that out for our construction management team to apply to, look at it, see if they agree with it, what they can price it out, make sure the price matches and all those types of things. But Kim's going to talk to you a little bit next about that. Here's some pro, what the K would look like. Please don't get married to the colors. That was what we had at Sam Gaines. Obviously, this is just renderings, what you can look at. Down on the left is the office admin building. On the right, you have classroom pods, very similar to those schools that I outlined to you already. Again, we'll go over this schedule with Kim's presentation, but doing the same thing, being ready. The key here is being ready for August of 2026 to bring students into that school as well. So, you can see, very busy. So, the next thing I want to talk about is our HVAC project updates that you all have remembered. A lot of this funding is coming from Esser. Dale Cassens is coming from our, some of our sales tax money and some of our capital funding, really our capital outlay. But we wanted to talk about this. If you look, again, I orient you to the bottom right of the slide because those are the companies that we're using to help us assist it. Again, innovative. We used to try to do these during the summer periods, but as you know, over the last several years, we have summer school. So, we need to get the work done to make sure that we're bringing up our systems. So, we're doing all of this work while kids are in school, working collaboratively, communication, project plans with our principals, staff, making sure the sites are clean, safe, and we are moving forward. So, the first one I'm going to talk about is Dale Cassens. And what encompasses that scope of the project is new HVA systems, ceiling grids, LED light fixtures. So, why we're in there? Because we remove everything out of the ceiling, we replace it, and doing the upgrades to the lighting. Interior painting, especially at Dale Cassens, we're doing new flooring in Buildings Three and Seven. So, you can see some of the before pictures and then after pictures as well. Remember, we also had done the roof there. So, it just, the project all went perfectly as we wanted it to. Expectation, this will be done before September 2024, but we continue to move on. Right now, Building Two is complete. Building Six is at forty percent complete. We expect that to be done and finished in early 2024, and then Building Three will begin to be completed by the September 2024. The next project by our friends here, Jaclyn, is Forest Grove Middle. You can see the work, again, same scope. You're putting in new HVAC systems. You can see an example of that on the bottom right. We have upgraded piping in the central chiller plants, ceiling grids, LED lighting, interior painting, some new flooring where we calls for it, and then we give some examples of what that looks like. Again, huge projects. Anytime we can during spring break, during winter break, we go in there even more focused to get things done. So, it's all about scheduling, planning, and communicating to make sure that we're providing the valuable service our students and parents expect. This one here is Manatee K eight, same scope. Building Two is complete. Building Six is at forty percent complete. Again, all of these things are being done at the same time, communicated, so we feel real good about these projects being completed on time and on budget. You can see the, some of the flooring in there as well as we go through. And then Mariposa, this one is also a Jaclyn project in the bottom left, if you see it. Again, same scope, getting all of those done as well, and then we will meet, we'll meet that timeline to get them in place. Especially during this summer, we're going to have a big push. Okay. The next thing we're talking about is St. Lucie West High School Outdoor Environmental Revitalization. So, on the left there, you'll notice this scope has several components. It's exterior painting of the school, which will be completed this summer. Outdoor environmental revitalization, so things like our palm trees, I'm going to be able to show you, planners. All of those have been completed for the student side. We'll be doing the front side of the entrance to give the entrance of the school more definition. So, if you look at that, where any of those green dots, it's hard to see, is we'll be putting in thirty-eight palms as you're coming up the front of the school, and right in that front of the school entrance, we have aligned some sable palms in there as well. If you look at it, that is the backside. That's already done, completed and placed. That's the student parking area when you come down in between Machesney Park and where the students park. You can see we've already completed that, and then the planners throughout the school have all been done, refreshed, working with our teams to make sure that we're watering the plants, make sure the weeding, all of those types of things is part of the schedule. Derek and Carolyn at that time have really worked with their teams to make sure that's happening. The other piece is the painting. This is just the simulation. This isn't the colors that we're selecting. Derek, I, and Jennifer had met with Ms. Popwell last week on looking at potential colors. We'll have an interior designer come in to help us pick those colors, but that will be completely redone over the summer. The mural, you'll notice on the left, will be painted over. She is good with that because it is extremely faded. We'll probably move some lettering over there and then put the mascot or something that she would want in that area. But this is just a tool that we are able to bring a simulation in and bring our buildings in, and then start putting out different colors onto, to the school itself. The last thing that will be done here is we're finishing up, as you know, we are re-roofing a lot of this school, two hundred and eighty thousand square feet, re-roofing, putting over latex. We knew we can get some extra time, so that will be done in mid-April as well. So, you can see lots of work going into the school, plus some doors being changed out, all of those types of things, new flooring in the auditorium. That's all been complete to date. Last one I wanted to talk about, it's really a combination, and that's CA Moore. As we move over, the transition to the K eight model, we have been, we have gutted out all of the hybrids in the back of the school that are empty. Redid all the flooring. We're putting in all new ceilings work. We've updated all the HVAC systems, landscaping, power washed, getting it ready for the opening of next year for students to arrive. We are working on all the IT work because they, they were not being utilized for that. There are a little bit more offices than where kids were meeting, so we put in the projectors. All of that's been checked out and getting done within there. Flooring replacement, so we'll completely replace all the flooring inside those hybrids, and then re-floor it with all the tile and everything else that we need to have in there. So, that's our work there. In addition to that, not after the upcoming year, we have in our books, working with our CFO, Michelle Thomas, planned for the new gymnasium. Off on the left, we have some renderings that we're working on, and architects that will be putting a new gymnasium there, just like all our other K eights. And that is the same for Palm Point as well, putting out a gymnasium there, and then also working on some of their parking issues that we have. We're stacking our parking and pickup areas. That's a, that's been a big issue since we put that school in. We have some ideas and drawings around that. So, those are some of the big projects that we have going. That doesn't mean we're not doing other things. We are doing a tremendous amount. The team has been extremely busy getting out things like repainting the lines at the schools, LED lighting in parking lots, changing out all the locks, making sure all those things are done. That won't, I won't be showing you all that work today, but that is ongoing as well. And then sticking to our timeline, we'll be ready to accept kids at CA Moore for the beginning of the school year. We'll have our first sixth-grade class coming in there, correct, Dr. Wild? And we'll be ready to make sure we have all the classrooms ready for those students as well. And Dr. Prince, hopefully that was slow a little bit somewhat.
I thought it was, I thought it was fantastic.
Oh, boy. No, please.
And I was to open it up for any, let me make a statement, then I'll open it up for questions. I think, I think we are, as a district, where our priorities are, and I, and I think that this presentation touched every part of our district. You know, we've, you know, we are rebuilding Westwood. That is a commitment to that community. We want to, CA Moore to be a first-class facility, expanding that into a K eight, making sure that, that we revitalize that school much in the same way we revitalize. making sure that, that we revitalize that school much in the same way we revitalize Sam Gaines, uh, because we want that to be a destination school. You know, we're building a new high school, a new K eight where they're needed. But across the district, um, we are touching every school. And I'd, I'd also like to add that the school district, if you really think about it, uh, and this is why it's so exciting for us as a leadership team, but we've truly become a destination district. We, we are an attractive place, uh, to work and send your kids to school. And I'm very proud of the work that our staff has done, that our folks have done. We have been on budget, on time, and we've done everything with integrity. And I, I just want to thank, uh, our team, our contractors, the folks that go out and do our work that we've hired. They've done magnificent work because really the school district in a lot of ways is the engine of our local economy. I mean, if you really think about it, we are the largest employer. We are, um, the, the, the work that we do in our district is we bring in and spend the most money. We're hiring the most people. We're hiring the most contractors. And not only that, we're creating our own workforce for, with our local students and working with our Economic Development Council to make sure that the programs in our schools are meeting the needs of our local employers. So, you know, it's great to see all the growth and development that we have, but we just need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our local community by, by making sure we've got first-class schools that our kids can go to. So with that being said, we've shared a few things. Most, um, uh, you know, we've, I wanted to also bring up our half penny sales renewal, which will be up in November. All with the exception of the HVAC jobs, those are Esser dollars. Uh, the half penny touches all of those jobs that we just mentioned. That's why it's so critically important for us as a district to secure that renewal because it is going to be driving and helping drive our growth and not just our growth, but the maintenance and the renewal of many of our schools in our district.
Hi, dear Madam Chair. Um, Terrence, it was an excellent, um, presentation. It shows not only us, but the community of how much work goes into this incredible, massive work uh, that we're doing as a district. Uh, my, my, um, high priority, and it's been, it was covered very well today, is using local employers and employees and, and building this economy up, uh, and using our, our district to make a big difference in the economy in this community. So my question to you, um, I believe you said fifty percent, uh, is it our employees that's doing the contracting work? Or is it the contractors? Or who is the fifty percent of, uh, people are local? Is it the actual workers? Please clarify that.
Sure. So the fifty percent, um, you were speaking about Legacy High School because all those other projects are local, are local, uh, construction management teams and everything. The fifty percent that we are talking about on the job right now at Legacy are, are concrete individuals, are electricians. Those are local to the Fort Pierce area. And that was what you heard in the video, um, from Mr. Noble, uh, was talking about fifty percent. We track that, uh, in our job to make sure that we are doing everything to, when we bid it, to do outreach, um, to our, our local, uh, community and make sure that they are available. We provide assistance if they need help with the paperwork, those types of things. That's what the outreach. But the fifty percent was only on the legacy at this time, right? The con- concrete, raising the buildings, um, and those, that's what you heard about fifty percent of our local people on the Legacy High School job at this time.
I would like for us to be very conscious of, of local people having work.
Yes, ma'am.
And so even with the fifty percent, I like for that number to go up personally.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we should use as many as we can that's right here in our local community.
I can tell you in every meeting we're having, that is our focus. Uh, we are tracking it. It is a KPI that we have in our monthly report that we get back on all of the projects that we have, but specifically Fort Pierce, Westwood, and Legacy. And it will be the same once we go out to Western Grove K eight.
I am also a visual learner. So if you can, you say you track that. So you have it on paper for me. I like to see it.
Sure, absolutely. I can give you and we'll have the company's names.
Mr. O'Leary, speaking of local, we've got some of our folks here today. Want to introduce who's, uh, who's in the audience over here?
Absolutely. That's Jaclyn right there, and they're working on two of the HVA projects. And those HVA projects range from, you know, three million out of Dale Cassens, much smaller, all the way up to about just under eight million dollars.
And who built this building? Who built this building?
I believe Jaclyn, yes, yeah. Jaclyn did build this building as well.
Mr. O'Leary, can I make a statement to, to what Dr. Mills is saying? When you're building a project of a hundred and twenty million dollars, it's hard to, to, to find a local contractor that's big enough to handle this type of facility too. So I know construction from, from, you know, you're hiring concrete, you're hiring the electrical. But once you start getting to the interior finishing, it's, you can hire local people, but you're not going to hire the local company. You're going to have to go down to Fort Lauderdale and it's going to be, um, I mean, we're, that's just the nature of the beast. So, I mean, I wanted to make sure that was a point that we're hiring local people, but the contractor may be from down south or maybe even up to Melbourne where you can find the bigger companies that's able to come in and handle a project of the scope.
And just for clarification, in that fifty percent, those are local companies that are, that are here. That's, that's the difference as we're going through.
And that's, that's the point that I'm making. I understand that we want the best and those that can get the job done.
Agreed.
But I want us to be very conscious of our local community as much as possible.
But the, the, the guys will also hire local too.
Exactly.
For, for the project. But, because when you see it on paper, you won't see it, but, but they'll, they'll put it out there and the guy, the guy's talking.
Show me as much as you can.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be happy to. So, but thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. That's great clarification. The other.
I'd also like to, I'm sorry to, don't mean to interrupt you, Terrence, but, uh, Dr. Mills, I share your priority. You know, we want to keep as much local as possible, and that is our priority. We do a number of outreach, uh, programs to try to bring in our local, uh, contractors and our local electricians, whatever, that they can, they can latch on to some of these large jobs to make sure they understand what the qualifications are, to try to make sure we have as much local participation as possible. Because we do track that, and those are questions that I ask of my leadership team because I want to know, because I know that is the board's priority. So if, if it's the board's priority, it's my priority. So, and, and it also just makes good economic sense locally. We want to make sure that we're providing, um, opportunities for people who live in our community to, to build our schools and not just build our schools, work on HVAC, work on all these other jobs that we have, uh, that we, um, that we contract for.
Sure. I just want to say, uh, it's a great job. You did a great job and, uh, it was comprehensive. I liked how you went right from building the school right down to the HVAC improvements and the outside painting of the school. You gave us just about everything. And I just want to say, I think you got job security here for quite a while.
I have a, I have a great team, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Can I just also say, Terrence or Mr. O'Leary, what was your first job in the school district?
I was a TMH, uh, Trainable Mentally Handicapped Special Ed teacher, started out at St. Lucy Elementary.
Now, I just wanted to say that, that Mr. O'Leary, I rely on him. I always say that he's, uh, Sundance to my Butch. Like, because I rely on him so much and he's truly, the, the more that Mr. Gent and I were here, the more we realized how truly talented he was. To the scope of his work has just gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. And I'm just really excited, uh, for you, Mr. O'Leary, because not only are you a great leader as a chief operations officer, but you have surrounded yourself with fantastic people. And, and you are who you hire. And, and I think you're a good reflection. I would like to think of me, but also all the people you surround yourself are, are a good reflection of all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the, the last, and this will, this will be brief because this is just a review. And it's, um, we are about to put out for bid the K eight, and I've got, uh, Kim Albritton, who handles our procurement, and she's just going to provide a quick reminder to the board of what that process looks like. And, uh, you know, our, our job is this, you know, we, we workshop this, you know, multiple times with the board. We made some adjustments to our procurement process based on the input from the board. Uh, you know, we are going to be putting this out. All of the folks that apply for, to, to build the K eight will know what all the requirements are. It's really clear what the requirements are. There, there's the same set of rules. It's like you're going to play a sport. You, you know what the rules are and you, you know, hopefully may the best man win. But I will say, uh, one thing we want to focus on is, uh, you know, we've got a committee of folks that are doing this. I want to make sure that the process is fair. We've made a lot of changes to the committee so that it's not the same, uh, identical group of people that has selected previous schools. We want to make sure that I remind you of how we've kind of adjusted the process based on the board's input. And lastly, you know, our job is to make sure that the process is followed with integrity. And I, I pride myself on, on making sure all the people that represent me in the school district, we are going to, we're going to operate the right way. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Albritton. And like I said, this is just a review, but she's going to kind of share with you what the, once again, with the, um, what it looks like and what the timeline is. Kim?
Thank you. All right. Good morning, Board Chair, Superintendent, Board Members. You know who I am at this point. I'm here to provide a refresher on our construction procurement for the new K eight. This slide shows our preliminary schedule for the Western Grove K eight project. We're currently in the design criteria phase. It's highlighted in yellow. Once we complete that phase, we're going to advertise for the construction manager in May. The board will then approve the selection of the construction manager in July. And we anticipate bringing a GMP, which is the Guaranteed Maximum Price, to the board in January of 2025. From there, we anticipate opening the school August of 2026. So as we prepare to advertise, we'd like to review the process that was finalized six months ago. As a reminder, we follow Florida Statute 287055, the Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act, also known as CCNA. This guides us on the steps for the selection of our construction managers. On this slide, I'm showing you the steps required from advertisement to recommendation of awards to meet our CCNA requirements. From the time we release the RFQ until board approval, we are under a cone of silence, which means vendors may not contact anyone other than our purchasing staff regarding this RFQ.
Kim?
Yes, sir.
Hang on. I'm going to stop you right there. What is the cone of silence again?
It means if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, literally anything they want to discuss about this RFQ, they should be directed to me.
Okay, so any of the construction companies that are applying for the job, they, any questions, comments, anything should be directed
Correct.
towards you, correct?
And not just construction companies, anybody. We get questions from subconsultants, subcontractors. Everybody has questions on projects of this size. So we're prepared to answer all of those questions if you just send them to us.
And that's a legal requirement?
It's a legal requirement, yes.
Okay.
And that protects the vendor too, because if the vendor does not adhere to that process, they can be excluded from the project. So we want to make sure that everybody is included and doesn't get, you know, kicked out for a technicality.
It also protects the district?
It does protect the district as well.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
So, um, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, they want you advertise the cone of silence starts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it doesn't end until the recommendation is approved by the board.
Okay.
So it can be quite long.
And to Mrs. Richardson's question, I know you just went over this, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask this again so we all understand. When are we advertising the RFQ?
We anticipate May. I don't have the exact day in May yet, but as I had in the prior RFQs, I will send out an email so you guys are aware.
Okay.
There is two cones of silences or however you want to say it. There is one when you advertise. Ties and is there another one somewhere further down?
Nope.
Or this is just it?
It's all one big cone. I don't know else to say. That's why I put the graphic on there. Yeah. So basically from, it's almost from the beginning to the end.
Of the project?
Of the process to select the vendor.
That's what I'm saying.
Not once we select.
Once, once the board approve it?
You can talk to whoever.
Okay. All right. I mean, it's, I just want to make sure because for whatever reason, I thought there was a cone of silence when, oh, no, it's when you were, um, selecting the, the, the contractor.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. When we select the contractor, and this applies to all types of selections that we do. We're just specifically talking about construction today.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Fantastic. Okay. I don't know where we are. Okay, so once we advertise, we do host a public meeting so that all interested parties can attend. We review the project. We answer questions. We also host a question and answer period that they're allowed to send in their questions and clarifications. Um, and I respond to all of those with input from our facilities team. They have input helping me answer those questions because I know a little bit about all of it, but not enough to be as smart as they are. Okay, so when we do put it out, we publish this evaluation criteria. And as you recall, this is the criteria that we presented about six months ago, and we did make some changes to it. So included in this slide was the previously discussed criteria as well as the additional criteria that we added based on the board feedback that we received in September. As you can see, it's the volume of work, local participation, and the certified MBE business credits. So the added criteria in, oh, sorry, I forgot that one. This is our timeline once again for our Western Groves K eight. It'll open in August of 2026. We're going to advertise in May, and we anticipate bringing it to the board for approval for the construction manager in July with construction starting January 2025. That's it.
So Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, you know, once you put this out, do we bring in the companies to go through the criteria with them or to, to, to discuss it with them?
Correct.
Okay.
We do. We, we will post a notice of, of meeting that they can come in. It's optional. We don't require that they come in. But we do host a, a big public meeting. We did that with both of the high schools. We invite them in and we have it here typically. We have our project managers and our architect present on what it's going to look like, what the scope is going to require so they can ask their questions. We had a pretty large turnout for the last two.
Okay, but the bottom line is we would encourage those
We would absolutely encourage them to participate and show up and ask the questions.
Okay. And secondly, the, the committee, I think, is made up of ten folks that will be, um, that will be scoring based on the rubric. Do they get trained on, on
They do.
what they're scoring?
They do. All of our committees are provided information on how to score. It's a written document. But for the larger ones, we also do training, and we will host a training with all of these committee members prior to this going out so that when they do get the information, they know how to score. And we provide them what the rubric's going to be, how to work the system that we, we work in, what the cone of silence is, what the Florida sunshine law is, all that stuff so that people aren't surprised by the information when they get it, when it comes in.
And it's all public record?
This is all public record. Now, this isn't public record until we make a
Right.
a decision.
Right.
But once the decision is made, it becomes public record.
Right. And the process, the scoring, all that is public record.
All of it.
Okay. All right. Uh, any questions?
I have a question. Thank you. Um, in terms of the, um, the, the, the bidding or sending it out to bid, do you reach out to the contractors that you have on file to let them know that it's going up to bid or how, how does that process work?
Actually, we do. So we have a list and we know who we work with. I mean, it's a lot of the same vendors, and if we have vendors that have expressed interest, like, hey, I would really like to know when this goes out. Um, we're not required to make personal notifications, but we do actually reach out to them personally. I have, um, two of my staff. That's what we do when we, and on all of our staff. If it's radios, new construction, internet service, it doesn't matter. We, we notify vendors, especially vendors that have already worked with us in the past. And then we have an electronic notification system that vendors can sign up for that it'll automatically notify them based on the, the codes that they pick for what, what work they do. So, yes.
And the other way to notify or notification is TV, radio, newspaper?
Yes, so we're required to, um, post anything for construction over a certain threshold in our newspaper. Um, so this would be advertised in our newspaper. It has to be advertised at least three times prior to the due date. So, and I can't remember off the top of my head what the threshold is, but there's a construction threshold. Um, it's a few hundred thousand dollars where it's required by law to be in, well, statute, I should say admin rule too. But it's required to be in the newspaper. So, but all of them go on our website. They get sent out and then we personally notify.
And which newspapers are we advertising in?
So we use the largest one in St. Lucy, which is the, whatever TC Palm is called.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Holly, that's Okay. Ms. Holly, that's all the content I have. I know the board has other business, however you want to proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Albritton. Yes, we are kind of at the conclusion before we move into our discussion regarding the school board attorney interviews. So I, that could be lengthy. So I'm gonna just call us for a 10-minute recess. Get a bottle of water, walk around a little bit, and then we'll reconvene right here at 10:20. Members, let's call ourselves back to our meeting. The task before us today is to have discussion regarding the five applicants for school board attorney. So we've got a multitude of ways we can handle that. We can have just general discussion. I'll be sure that wasn't something we need to evacuate for. We can have general discussion. We can entertain motions, strictly up to the, to the will of the board. But what I want to say before we get into the meat of it is that we are being recorded right now, but we are not being telecasted live for this portion. And the reason being, if we decide to take action today, I think that the applicants deserve to hear it from us rather than on public TV. So that will go out immediately afterwards if we decide to take action. Don't want to interfere with any negotiations or anything that, that will come as a result if we take action today. It will be televised afterwards, but not live. Any questions or concerns on that?
I do have a question. So the meeting that we had
Where's the flight names?
Like, two weeks ago, or whenever we had it. How do we access that?
Dr. Prince, I'm gonna need to defer to you, or asking, how do we access the tape that was made the day we interviewed the applicants?
That's, Lydia can provide that.
Okay.
Communications.
So that's not something that is, that was put on like YouTube or wherever?
No, we did not put that on YouTube.
Okay.
No.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, can I, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding you. Are you saying that we can't take action today, and if we do?
We can.
That it's gotta be kept under wraps?
No, I just, I just feel like professionally, that when we have applicants come and interview with us, rather than them seeing it on live TV the same time as everyone, that we have the courtesy, the professional courtesy, to call them and say, this is what we decided today, or this is our next steps. If we decide to go with applicant A, then applicant A is going to know that if they're watching it live, as well as B, C, D, and E know the same thing. And I, I think it behooves us professionally
Is that what we did, is that what we did two years ago?
Yes.
I, I made my mind up, so I, you know, I
Well, and, and just to reiterate, you have the agendas in front of you, but under 2.02, action may or may not occur at the board's discretion. So we can make a decision today, or we can perhaps, if we have applicants, we want to call back for a second interview or any of that. Our options are wide open. I just feel like professionally, we need to be able to tell them before the rest of the world knows. And, and as I said, it will be televised, just not live. Any other?
And when you say televised, it will be put on the website?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, I'm still old school with that. It's all television, not web, to me. Yes. Alright, so to open it up, is, is it the will that we have some discussion concerning the five? We can do that?
Can you remind me, what, what did we do the last time? Did we have discussions? Was there any discussion?
We did have discussion, and then a motion was made and, and seconded and carried. Yes. And we can start with that, but remember, if you make a motion for something, the discussion has to stay centered on what that motion is.
It is the will, my will, that we have discussion.
Prior to a motion being offered?
Yes. I don't, I don't have, I want to hear from others. Mr. Kelly said that he already made up his mind of who he wants. I want to hear his reasons why. I don't have a, I've given, I've rated each of them. I don't have any connection with any of them, and I just, I want to know from the board your opinions, so that if indeed, you know, it sounds like I need to go with that individual, I'm open. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm open. But I do have my own ratings here. And, you know, if my rating is really low, low, low to somebody's recommendation, it's not gonna be a go for me. So I just want to hear.
Correct.
I want to be open to whatever everybody is saying.
And that's why I wanted to be clear that we can have discussion about all candidates in general. But if there's a motion offered right away, then the discussion has to stay centered on that motion.
Well, listen, I recommend we don't make a motion right away.
Are we at consensus then to have discussion prior to a motion?
Yes.
You looking for a motion?
No, I'm looking for consensus, which I see we have already with three, so.
I don't know what happened, but during the meeting, I could hear everything. I don't know, I'm having, I just about could hear you. I don't know.
Okay. So we will, I will open discussion. Dr. Mills, would you like to lead off?
Okay. What do we have? Five different ones
Correct.
That we interviewed?
Correct.
And the first one that I have, which actually got the lowest score for me, is John Anastasia. Okay. So for me, it's, it's definitely a no-go for him. If someone does hear, have, him has a high priority, I want to know why. Okay. And then, the next one that came in line, or what, how do you want us to do it, maybe just open it up?
It's just open discussion. If, you know, you brought up Mr. Anastasio.
Ms. Holly, rather than saying some people were lower than others, if we just maybe had our top two and see if we had some consensus, because I don't want to like
I'm good with that.
Put people's
I felt a little funny about this.
Yeah.
Alright. Everyone clear on that suggestion? Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, to just put our top two candidates on the table and see where we lie with that.
But can we, and, and I agree with that as well, but I would like to maybe look at also what it is that we are looking for. What are we, you know, these are top two candidates. Why? What it is that we are looking for? What would be a best fit for, for the board? You know, not just because we like them, the smile, whatever. You know, if we could, you know, get some concrete reasoning so that we can.
And technically, that's what the questions were intended to do with the rating scale on there. But just to briefly, I'll offer my thoughts, and then if anybody wants to add to it, certainly do so. But what we're looking for is an individual or a firm that is fully versed in what it means to be an attorney to a school board as a whole and individually. Not someone that their major experience has been in school district work, but rather in the work of the board, which is policy and budget, and items that come before us for vote, such as that. I think it's really important that the person have Florida experience, because Florida law is so different from other states and the laws that they have. So I think that part is important. The, the depth and the breadth of, or their bandwidth as such, from the questions that we ask regarding different things like Robert's Rules of Order, like ethics, how do we talk to you when we're on the dais? How do we talk to you individually? The individuals that seem to understand and have experience with being a school board attorney, not a school district attorney, because in our district, they're distinctly different, although at times there is call that they need to, to work together. Does that help?
That helps a little bit. In terms of a school board attorney, I don't think that there were some that did not have the school board attorney experience.
Correct.
But like with everything else, I believe that if you have other experiences, that you can learn, because it's about the law. It's, it's about, you can learn, as long as you fit, you know? So that's what I'm asking for. I understand about, you know, all of those other things. For myself, the questions did not, they were very, how can I say? I don't want to say surface, but they were, you know, just holistic kind of questions that did not give me personally a feel for the depth, like you said, of what they can, they could do outside of reading their resume. So I wasn't able to get necessarily a depth. It was very surface feeling about, about them. Yes, we asked a lot of questions about Robert's Rules of Order, you know, so I think that that was something that we're looking for, somebody who understood the concept of Robert's Rules. So that was, I believe, a priority. So we didn't get much into the policy or the labor relations. We didn't get a lot into those kinds of questions.
Well, and labor relations is not something that the board attorney would be contracted with. That's our general counsel that, that does that. But policy, several of them spoke to the fact that they had, you know, looked into what we were doing, knew we were with Neola. So, you know, I think that was a good bearing as well, ones that knew us when they came and weren't just, you know, totally unaware of what we do and how we do it.
That told me, though, that they did their research.
Exactly.
They did not tell me that they, about policymaking, and it told me that they did their research before. That's what I, that was my perception.
No, I agree. But I think it's, it's always a plus when they come in and they know you.
Absolutely.
You know, you can see that they've done. I, I don't know that we have the benefit of being a huge learning curve, though, for somebody that may not have the experience or the connections in school board attorney type issues.
Important, or the connections.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But referring to the questions, question three, question four, and question five, I, was the most important to me. You know, question three, if you don't have your paper in front of you, was how do you plan to manage situations when a school board's priorities different from the superintendent's?
Yeah.
That was important to me. And then question four, I think question three was, yeah, that was Mr. Ingersoll's question. Question four was my own. How do you view the school board's attorney's role in providing counsel to individual school board members? How would you handle the requests from individual school board members? That was extremely important, the answers. And that's basically how I rated mine. And then number five, Ms. Richardson's, with specific regards to being the school board attorney, what is the most difficult case that you won? I thought that was important, that we have someone that can really fight for the district and for the school board if necessary and win as much as possible.
And I think the intent on that question was to see how much of it really was school board attorney?
Yeah.
Experience versus broad experience?
Yeah. Okay. And mine's, mine's, I think I would be more general with broad experience as well, but yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Okay.
The questions were important and to have the proper answers, as you say, but even the Robert's Rules thing that I asked at the time, because I really didn't have a question to ask. I just made that up. And, and whether the answer to the Robert's Rules, one person didn't answer it correctly. To me, all the questions, it was a matter for me at my age. I look at people, if they look me in the eye, how quick they answer the question, the confidence, the pauses between when they speak, if they go on and on about other things, about life situations, and I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in their experiences for school board, how the confidence that they give me. And by far, if you're looking for two people, by far, I'll just come to the, to the quick. I thought the last one, Ms. Jadoo and Mr. Cole, by far, to me, that by far were more qualified than the other three. And those are my top two there.
So you're referring to the firm of Wiss Sertoa and
Mr. Cole and Ms. Jadoo.
And Gray Robinson?
Yes, they, they
Okay. The, the two firms?
Yes. And they had the most experience and answered the questions and gave me the confidence that I thought.
Okay. Anyone else have a different thought?
Those were my top two, too.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll.
Okay. And who was the top two? Pick me that as names again.
Wiss Sertola.
Yeah.
She gave us the, the additional handout.
This one here.
And the Gray Robinson firm. That, there were three of them that came and presented. Mr. Cole, Ms. Marchman, and Ms. Branscombe.
No, this is it. I got my own madness over here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so the
What's that?
Go ahead, Ms. Richardson.
Why Sertoa?
Yes. That was one, and then the other one was Gray Robinson.
I am looking for Gray Robinson on my paperwork here, where I didn't know where I did. I got that.
Oh, okay.
Where I did the
Did your notes?
Yes.
Okay. I'll give you a few minutes to find it.
Who was the, oh, okay. Let's see. Who was the, who was the names of the people that were with them?
Candace Branscombe, Scott Cole, and Stephanie Marchman.
Okay. So that was not Jadoo?
No, that's the Wiss Sertoa.
That was the last one.
Yeah. And that, that is one that Mr. Kelly mentioned.
I don't have that one.
That's Amelia, Amelia Jadoo?
Jadoo, yes. That's correct.
So that wasn't Marchman either, was it?
No. Marchman is Gray Robinson.
Okay, that, okay, so it was Marchman. Okay, Gray Robinson, Marchman.
Marchman is Gray, right.
Okay. So I, they do have, for me, I do have them as the highest score. So, you know, and I, so they must have been really good.
Yeah.
I have them as the highest score. But the second highest score for me was actually Attorney Tora Sevilla. Now, I know that she doesn't have any school board experience, but she scored very highly in other areas for me.
Okay.
And I know that she does have a strong support system of people who do have school board experience.
Correct.
And as Ms. Jennifer said, giving a person the opportunity to get school board experience, you know, it's not always the one that you think may be the most, you know, able because of their background. Sometime you have to make that break, or help to make that break for someone. But she was very, I, I found her very connected with us in that she seemed to be a person that could actually understand what others are going through. And, you know, dealing with us as individual school board members as well was an important aspect for me, that she would, someone that's considerate.
Sure.
So I, I thought she scored like one point behind them. She did get a, a two for me in the area of, of school experience with school boards.
Experience, yeah.
Yeah, which was low. But outside that, even if she would have got a one, she would have came in second.
Okay.
Yeah. That's my two people there.
I'm sorry, who are they? What was the second person?
Can't hear you, Ms. Jennifer.
The second one was Tora Sevilla?
Yes.
Okay.
That was my second one.
Did you hear her first?
Did you hear her first?
Yes, I got the first. Um, and, and, and I, I, I have to, um, Tor Sevilla. Well, um, in terms of, um, being able to connect, and she has the, like, I agree with Dr. Mills in terms of the, um, the connections, um, a mentorship, the mentors, you know? I don't think that we should, and she's been, you know, like, up the ladder. She's taken all those steps to get to where she is. She was in the school system, you know, there's a lot of stuff that I think she could empathize with. A lot of areas that she could empathize with, she could understand, we wouldn't have to tell her. And the rest is knowledge, it's learning. The rest is knowing, you know, which you can learn, but the empathy you have to have, you know? Um, so I, I, I'm not, uh, adverse to giving somebody a chance to, 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 to learn because when we all came here, we were, um, I don't think all, any of us were school board members. We had to learn the job. And sixteen, fourteen, twenty years, we are here, so obviously we did a good job. You did a good job, you know, so they can learn. Um, it's, I think, again, I'm going back to best fit. Who is going to serve us as individual and as a board, the best fit? Because obviously what we had did not work. So we need to look at, and look at it from another perspective. And, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm in total agreement with Dr. Mills.
And you know, the other option, two, is if we narrow it down to one or two or even three, that we may want to have them come back.
Come back again.
And, you know, ask different questions, more specific or, you know?
I agree.
That sort of thing. This is not, you know, our, our current attorney has said, as long as it takes. So we're not under any kind of pressure to make a decision. We could, but we don't have to. Um, and, you know, I'm sure the rest of you agree that it's not something we want to do anytime soon again. So to, to give it the time that we need, I'm completely supportive of, of, of doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley, for, for making that clear to us today because I, I personally would like to recommend that, that we, um, have them come back, our top two, whatever we decide that top two is, and not be in a rush here because we do not want to have to come back here again, as we said, anytime soon.
Right.
Um, you know, our last attorney was not here that long. And, uh, the one before that, we had forever.
Yeah.
So we want to, I'd like to have another one forever.
Yeah.
You know, at least until I leave out of here, I don't want another attorney. But, you know, um, I'm willing to be open to having another one if we need, a different one.
Sure.
So today, I, I, I don't want to rush the process myself. Um, I do have two that I would like to see again.
Okay.
I, I cannot, I know the, the, the first one that I mentioned, and Jack, you recommended them as your top two, one of your top two as well. I know for some reason they, they had a high score with me, but I can't really, you know, I want to see them again, I want to hear them again. Um, because I kind of, I'm thinking, I want to make sure that we have attorneys that can be, that can really provide what we need. What we all need. So I like to hear them again to decide whether or not they would be, continue to be my top.
Right.
Um, and, uh, Tor Sevilla, I like to hear again. But I don't know where she comes at with the rest of you. I, Ms. Jennifer, uh, mentioned it, that she also agrees to give Tor of us, uh, Tor Sevilla another opportunity, I think. Um, I haven't heard from Mr. Ingersoll. I want to hear from you as far as your top two.
I thought I said it.
Oh, say it again, I didn't hear it the first time.
Sure. No, it was, uh, Scott Cole and Amelia Jadoo.
Is that the same as Mr. Kelly, your top two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can I ask Mr. Ingersoll why those two?
Well...
What attracted you?
I, 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 I hear, I predominantly hear you, and I hear you too, Mrs. Mills, but I, I empathize with you, Mrs. Richardson, because somewhere twenty-five years ago, or however long ago, Dan Har- or, it's got to be longer than that because I've been on here almost twenty years. Some forty years ago, Dan Harold had to get a start. And Dan Harold, someone had, someone had to take a chance with Dan Harold with St. Lucie County School District. And I would probably say Dan Harold was probably one of the better school board attorneys in the state, probably in the nation. Um, the way that he approached board members, the way that he approached, um, situations, the way he worked with superintendents, the way he worked with the state of Florida, and the way that he networked. Was he solely a school board attorney? And the answer is no. But someone took a chance on Mr. Harold and he made himself to be the best. We went and my vote la- on the last attorney was because of famili- familiarity. Didn't work out. Reason being, there was not communication between board members. There wasn't communication on a, on a couple of board items with the superintendent that we found out didn't play out well. That's why some of the agenda items were, were pulled. There was miscommunication quite a few times. So, and then there was also, I would say, uh, a lack of experience needed to maneuver through what we're going to go through in the next couple of years. And when I interviewed these people, the questions that I asked, I wanted to slip in two questions. One was, have you ever worked with proximity, you know, school assignment? Because that's going to be huge. It's not going to be huge just next year, but it's going to be huge for the next three or four years as you maneuver through that situation. And it's going to be a situation for board members and the superintendent because you're going to see a lot of people come to the school district upset, concerned where their children are going to go. And it's going to take us as a team to get together and be able to have that conversation. Well, we can't sit here and have the conversation. The attorney has to massage us all to make sure that this is going to go in the right cohesive direction as a school board.
So which, which question did you choose?
It wasn't on the sheet.
It wasn't, we didn't ask that question.
I, I, I asked it to the ones that, that, that I felt comfortable that had some type of...
No, it wasn't on the sheet of questions you added.
No, no, no. And the second question I asked that was important to me was, how do you assimilate school board members in education? And, and I, I, I felt that was important from my growth because Mr. Harold, number one, orientated me. He pulled me to the side, went over the agenda with me, not from the school district perspective. Because when you, as a new school board member, particularly when I was there, I didn't trust the school district, you know? They were giving me stuff and I was just like, yeah, 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 yeah. But I trusted Mr. Harold because he directed me in the path that was, I felt was more objective rather than hearing it from one perspective. He pushed me more towards FSBA, getting trained professionally, understanding what my role as a school board member is. Because if you start out with a good attorney laying the line, I felt like it would, we would be better off in the long run. So we need an attorney that's going to come in and try to educate us and, 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 and new members, too. So, that, those two law firms, I felt gave me the experience that I need, that I feel comfortable in going forward in the future. Now, Tor Sevilla, I feel like she's got the experience from, from family members that she could draw on, but at this point in time, I, I, I feel like, and that's, and that's basically the reason why I was going to bring up changing law firms in the first place is because I didn't think we could go forward with, with the communication issues and stuff. So, I mean, but Tor Sevilla, I think, will have the experience in the next few years. I mean, if she, if she went on with a smaller, uh, smaller, uh, school district, I, I think, you know, we could pick her up after she has a couple of years of experience. But like I said, it's right now, it's, you know, these, the two, the two, the two... I mean, when I asked about proximity zones, you, you saw them, they go, a couple of them puckered up. And it's just like, yeah, but they've been there, so.
Um, the one that, that you, that both you and Jack have mentioned, um, the Wiss one? Wiss, Wiss?
Well, yes, ma'am, I have both of them.
Sero- Rota?
Right.
Yeah. That, that, that firm received a low score for me. And, um, so...
Are you comfortable sharing your thoughts on, on that? I mean, I don't, certainly don't have to be on the spot, but as you said earlier, to help us understand why others arrived at the opinions that they did.
Okay, this is them. They were, for me, the score was all over the place.
Okay.
Okay. They received a four as far as the experience with, um, school board. As a school board attorney, um, very experienced in that area. But then when it came to question two, it was, um, it was a three. And I think possibly the three was based on where they located. Where they located.
They're in Boca.
Yeah, that, that's where my three came from.
They're in Boca, but one of the associates that was here that day, um...
Melvin was in Fort...
It was in Fort...
But he's not your attorney.
But he's not, he's not going to be the representative attorney.
No, no.
So he's not, he's not the one that's coming to meetings.
He was kind of there on call.
Right, but he's not the one coming to the meetings. The one coming to the meetings coming all the way from Boca.
Boca, correct.
And I think that was Jack's question as far, yeah, as far as, um, being able to attend the meetings, you know? Um, I don't mind if an attorney wants every blue, blue moon has a representative that stands in their place to the meetings. But, um, Boca is quite a way, I went to school in Boca.
Yeah.
I, I know about how the traveling distance, so, um, that is why they got, but they still got the three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we look at, uh, the next question. How do you plan to manage situations when the school board priority is different from the superintendent's? They got a two with their response. So, uh, you know, that brought their score down. And then, um, my own question, I gave them a two. Uh, how do you view the school board's attorney's role in providing counsel to individual school board members? I did, I must have did not like that answer at all.
Okay.
Based on the two. And then the other one was a two, uh, that was Ms. Richardson's question. And then the question you gave in the end was a three, so they were all over the place. So they definitely is not a choice of mine's in regards to the two top.
Okay.
But I do have, I, I do definitely have the other one, um, uh, down as a top, uh, the top score that I had given everyone.
This Gray Robinson firm?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay.
Can I ask Mrs. Hawley, um, what, what, what is your take?
Um, I was, I was torn, um, because as, as you mentioned, there is a mix in there. My top firm was Gray Robinson. Um, and then I honestly had a tie between, um, Ms. Tor Sevilla and the, um, Wiss Sertoa firm. So I had kind of a top, top two and a half.
You had a, you had a tie between, I'm, I'm sorry, you went, I don't, maybe it's you and, I can't hear her. A tie between who, Tor Sevilla and?
And, uh, the firm from Boca, um, Wiss Sertoa.
So what is, what was the, the, I mean, what were your thoughts as far as they were concerned? I mean, you had a tie, but what were your thoughts?
Um, proximity is about the same, ones in West Palm, ones in Boca. So that kind of leveled out. Um, the experience that the, um, Sertoa firm would bring, because they've got a lot of school board experience, so that was promising. As far as Ms. Tor Sevilla, Tor Sevilla is concerned, she, she has that zest to learn, um, and genuine, um, you know?
Genuine.
Yeah, so why she may be lacking in some of the Robert's Rules of Order, some of the proximity, that, those kind of things, I think she's eager to learn about St. Lucie County and what we expect and what we want. So it, it was a balancing act between the experience and, and the genuineness of knowing us. Plus, she does have the history of, of her dad being the current attorney, um, and, and Mr. Harold. You know, she's got some great mentors. And I, I don't know the mentoring background of the firm. Obviously, they do bring gifts and graces to the table. I, I'm just not, I'm about the fit as well. And I, I did have it down to those, those three.
Thank you. Um, I, I, again, I go back to, you know, the fit and the ability to learn.
Right.
You know, so...
It, the, the ability and the willingness?
And the willingness.
Which is, which is a big factor for me.
And I think that that is a bigger factor than the knowledge. We can, if you, if we got to that place, we will acquire the knowledge over time. The question is, I guess, do we have, how much time do we have to acquire that knowledge? But she, even though she's a sole proprietor, or whatever you want, whatever that word is, um, she has support.
Correct.
And that's what, to me, is important. There's always somebody she can refer to. And even without that, she, she's a sole, um, practitioner by herself anyway. But the added benefit is that she has beaucoup support behind her, you know, so she's not alone. So for me, best fit, you know, somebody that is there, somebody you can trust.
That's the genuine, I like that word.
And, you know, you have to be able to trust, like Mr. Ingersoll said, he trusted Dan Harold. You know, Dan Harold steered him in the right direction. That's another thing that, um, um, in terms of being a new board member, and I appreciate that from you, is that board members, when we come here, I personally was never given, um, you know, like, sat with an attorney. Um, and, and, and I have to say that Molly was not the attorney when I came on the board, okay? So I never sat with an attorney who said to me, Mrs. Richardson, this, 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 this. That was not something that was given to me as a, as a brand new board member. So that, Mr. Ingersoll, is very, very, I think it's very important and necessary.
I think all of us had that same experience. I don't think any of us actually had a conversation.
Right.
Right, we even when, you know, when we came on, we didn't, you know, we came on together, I don't, um, but it's...
So we had a different experience, I think, from what you were saying when you came on with Mr., uh, Mr. Harold.
Yeah.
He gave me a packet and basically said, you need to really look through this packet. That's the only thing I got is coming on as a board member. But you made an excellent point in that I think our attorney can play a tremendous part in when a new board member comes on and give, and go through certain things with them so they know what the protocols are. Because some of our protocols is, has always been in place and not, they're not policies. But that, the protocols have worked for this board for years, for the years that I've been on the board. Um, just the, the, because I think this board works very well together in when it comes to really, uh, following protocols, which are not policies. But we, at the same time, we have the freedom, you know, when it comes into policy, it's like, that's the law. But we have the freedom to be expressive and to be who we are. And at the same time, we know, okay, we have these policies here that we need to curtail whoever we are to fit in the policy so that it will be a working board. And that is what I've appreciated in the years with this board. It's, it's been a good working board because we have considered policy. Sometimes, I, I mean, protocols. Sometimes I have been uncomfortable in that I want to be expressive to certain things. And so I don't want it to be like a, a, like, policy where I can't do that. If I want to make a comment at the end... If I want to make a comment at the end of a me, at a board meeting, I want to make that comment, you know? If I have something, say, I want to say what I have to say. But I also want to be considerate, not to be so long or so whatever I'm trying to get across. And an attorney can help me with that, you know? But I think that it's going to come from the board in regards to what do we want this attorney to do.
Right. And, and she was one that mentioned training. And she, that was part of her response on that, that question, was that she would?
I appreciated that as well, absolutely.
And I don't remember her response, but I, I know that she, I know that I gave her a high score.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm not, I, I do a lot of things in this community and I'm, as well as the rest of you. So it's not like I'm, I'm remembering certain statements, but at the time I gave that rating, so she must've answered those questions very well.
She did. She went on a little bit and, you know, um, but I think it's because she was nervous, not because you're, you're an attorney, you're not going to be, it's an interview. So I do believe that she was nervous, so I would like her to come again. And, you know, she'd be more relaxed because she's been, she's been through it again, you know? I've been through it already, so come again and, you know, just be herself and, 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 and speak to us, you know? Um, but, um, I do, I did appreciate, um, your, your, your comments about, um, what, about the, the, being able to say things at the end of a meeting or whatever, because my understanding of Robert's rule of order, it's, it's, it's a guideline. It's not something that's etched in stone. It's a guideline that we have given the chairman, the, um, the, the position where she, um, what do you call it? You, you take order of the, 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 the meetings and so, but this is a guideline. So if we make a mistake or if we, whatever, I think it's okay, we just pick it up, you know? But it's not something that's in stone, that we have to, or, you know, um, you know, things happen and, and we can come out of order sometimes, there's a gray area. And you have that, the right, as, or anybody who is over, the chairman is, to, to guide the meeting. So Robert's rules of order, it's just to keep order. It's by a man to keep order. And that's the way I feel about Robert's rules, you know? So I really appreciate your saying, um, that, Dr. Mills, so that we can get an understanding. Um, I appreciate this meeting tonight, today.
Well, am I hearing then that we would like to call two of them back or three of them back?
Madam Chair, uh, I put it to you all different ways. You brought up a good question about Mr. Harold. I, I've been through this many times before, you know, I'm a hundred years old, like I said, and I look at things a little bit differently. Uh, what, some of your things that you said, though, I, I take notice of some of the things you said. Of the five people we had, there's only one that I would, in, in your words, I wouldn't stand for. You know? There's, there's one person there that I have no confidence or trust in. Uh, the other, the other four were, were good. It's just a matter of who's better. The attorney for the school board, just like the attorney for the county commission or the, uh, and you know, the city council that I was on for a long time, had a, the same attorney, just as Mr. Harold, who I was also with on the road and bridge authority, and I thought of him the same way then. He was professional, to the point, uh, I had confidence in him, I trusted him. Same thing with Mr. Orr, when we had him on the city council. Since he's left, we've had, they've had six attorneys, seven attorneys, I don't know. And they're going through it again right now, uh, trying to hire a attorney. And in the meantime, watching them trying to hire this, hire this new attorney, since Mr. Orr, I don't know how many times the city council has been sued because of bad legal opinions, and you're shaking your head, you know? It happens. Other school boards too, which fortunately for us, we had Mr. Harold. So the, this, the attorney is very, very, very important. And he, and he does work for the board, not for him, he's got his own attorneys. The point I'm trying to make is that it, this, time is of the essence and I don't want to wait. I, I, I think it's important to get somebody on board, uh, right away, that we have confidence in. We had, uh, we had four people that qualified out of the five, I think. And, uh, uh, the two that I picked the top two, what I went by, I'm picking those top two, I went by, by you folks. I watched when they were giving their presentations, I watched each one of you, and I saw who captured your attention the most. And who captured your attention the most was the lady, the last lady, Mrs. Jadoo and Gray Robinson, Mr. Cole. Paid more attention. I mean, uh, the other two, sometimes I, I would see, and for good reason, maybe looking at the phone or at the table, whatever, they seemed to capture everybody's attention more, more so, including him, I watched him too. So I, I, I'm very confident with the top two and I think time is of the essence, I don't want to wait. I, I have my mind made up and I, I'm confident that either one of those two, and if I had to pick, and if you asked for a motion, I would, uh, if I had to pick between the two, I would pick Mr. Cole from, from Gray Robinson. He, he, I have the most confidence and trust in that man. And he gave his answers concise, but he didn't go to his board that was with him, he answered the questions, which I appreciated the most. So I, I don't want to wait and I, I've taken everything into consideration. I watched very closely and like I said, I watched, I watched my compadres here when we did everything. So I, time is of the essence and I'm fine. If you did want a motion, I would make a motion to hire Gray Robinson, Mr. Cole.
Well, my, my, we're still in discussion.
Yes.
And, um, I would like to see, I definitely would, the one that I, that got a, didn't get the score wasn't to par for me. So I'd just put them to the side.
Okay.
But, um, I definitely would like to see that, that they, Gary Robinson and also, um, would like to have, uh, Torcivia as well come back before us.
Okay. Agreed with the two. Mr. Ingersoll?
I, I'm, I'm good either way.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ingersoll, I didn't hear.
I said I'm good either way.
Okay. And we've heard from, from Mr. Kelly with, with the two, but it appears the consensus is to have Gray Robinson and attorney Torcivia return. Is that an accurate assumption of the? Okay. All right. I will then, um, set up a, a recall meeting for those two ones to come back and talk with us. So, um, bef- I don't want to do this on tape either, but I'm going to ask each of you to come up with a question that you would like to ask for the secondary round and get it to me and I'll assemble it on the form. Not something that we've asked already, but, you know, a new question, perhaps a deeper question. Um, and get those to me and, and Jen will help me put them into format and have them available, you know, for everyone ahead of time. If, if we talk about it right now, then they're going to know. So, um, we'll just do it, work through Jen and I to assemble those. Time wise, do we want to do that sometime within the next couple of weeks? Is there a pleasure of the board?
As soon as possible.
Okay. We have our April ninth meeting. We could come prior to that, like we did this last time. It wouldn't take as long with, with just, with two coming back, so. Okay. But even at that, we could come at one thirty or two.
We even, yeah.
Pardon? Does that sound agreeable?
Yeah.
So you're, yeah, you're, um, cause again, I can't hear, you want to have two of the five come back and get interviewed again?
Correct.
I'll do whatever the board wants. I am not for that. I, time is of the essence. I think, um, I think today we could hire somebody, from what I heard, I think we could hire somebody right now. I, we got a lot of things on our plate.
I, we do, Mr. Kelly, but I don't think we're, I don't think that the majority of the board is ready to make that decision today, so.
Okay. Whatever the board decides, I'll go with, but I'm not for, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with what we did already. We spent a lot of time.
All right. Well, we will, I will be in touch with them, so if that's the ninth, if you all would take the next week, um, and say by April second, have it, your one question that you'd like to ask back to me, um, then we'll assemble those and have them ready. And I think I'll shoot for two o'clock for the first interview. And even if we give it longer and do the second one at like two forty-five or three, I think that's ample time to, to do. All right. Consensus with that?
Yes.
All right, appears so. Um, we had no other items on our agenda, so we are adjourned. And thank you all for your willingness to discuss.